Call the City Council meeting in order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman.
Here.
Excused.
Vining.
Yes.
Germaine.
She's excused. Present.
Felder.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
As we all please rise for the invocation, remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Guide our working together, give us wisdom to make the right decisions, your understanding to listen to each other, and your compassion to promote the peace and welfare of the residents of this community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, next item, please.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And for items, item B, approval of payments to vendors, the amount should read $627,503.58.
Items on the consent agenda, the council wishes have pulled for further discussion. Any items on the consent agenda, those present here this evening wish to have pulled for further discussion? Seeing none, motion, Councilman Felder.
Your honor, I'd make a motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, recommendations carried out, and resolutions adopted.
Second, motion by Councilman Felder, supported by Councilman Lemoore regarding the consent agenda approval. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman.
Yes.
Yes.
Lemoore.
Yes.
Felder. Mayor Clark.
Yes.
Next item.
I have no further items, your honor.
So this is a meeting that kind of closes the end of the year for this term of council members. And by our charter, we adjourn what's called through Sena DA. But before we do that, just some comments so you have an understanding of what the process is here for those that may not have been at swearing in in the past. So at this, following our adjournment, we all were very honored to have the Honorable Judge Cheryl Lohmeyer, Chief Judge of Probate, to do the swearing in ceremony for us. And so what we'll do is we'll be sworn in, starting with the clerk first, so she can keep the records in a fashion of what we do after that, and then the mayor, and then through the council. Before I go further, I just want to, I just kind of, well, I think I'll pause on that, so. So the, then following that, there's a brief photographs that'll be taken with the council members. And then we come back as the new council, and we start, we reconvene and call the order. And then we have our agenda that's minimal to this evening, which is, which is probably good. But also then we'll have opportunities for comments from council members at various times. Clerk, any further?
Did you mention, and I was organizing some things, so I may have missed it, but that when council, each council person completes their oath, if they could step toward my station, and I will have them sign it, and then Judge Lohmeyer will sign them all at the end.
Yes, thank you. So when we adjourn, we'll all go to the right here, we'll stand across the chambers, and we'll approach Judge Lohmeyer, and we'll be sworn in individually, so. And she, she has the oath as we've had as well, and she will make sure she reads it slowly for us, too. Okay, clerk? So if there's nothing further at this time, so the item next on the agenda is meeting to adjourn Sena DA. So at this time, I will call the meeting adjourned Sena DA, and we'll step away from the classroom here.
Hey, please raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Michelle Lavoy.
I, Michelle Lavoy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
To endeavor.
To endeavor.
To secure and maintain.
To secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Clerk treasurer.
Clerk treasurer.
For the city of Monroe.
For the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Like a.
Yep, you're good right there.
Thought that'll be extra. All right, come forward. Please raise your right hand. I, Robert Clark.
I, Robert E. Clark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
To endeavor.
To endeavor.
To secure and maintain.
To secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of mayor.
The duty, office of mayor.
Of the city of Monroe.
Of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Mayor.
Thank you, Judge.
Mr. Mayor, you're supposed to smile a little bit. Good.
All right.
All right, and so we're set up. Or Paul. All right, hello, Paula. Please raise your right hand to be sworn in. I, Paula Whitman.
I, Paula Whitman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
To endeavor.
To endeavor.
To secure and maintain.
To secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
And the duties of the office of.
Councilwoman for the city of Monroe.
Councilwoman of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my.
Congratulations, Doctor.
So nice to see you.
Good job. Fellow Klonian, please raise your right hand to be sworn in. I dub steel grave.
I dub steel grave.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
To endeavor.
To endeavor.
To secure and maintain.
To secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
The affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of, the office of.
The duties of, the office of.
Councilwoman for the city of Monroe.
For the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Doctor. All right, Ms. Vining. Please raise your right hand. I, Kelly Vining.
I, Kelly M. Vining.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
To endeavor.
To endeavor.
To secure and maintain.
To secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilwoman for the city of Monroe.
Councilwoman for the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Lemoore, how are you? Please raise your right hand. I, Brian Lemoore.
I, Brian Lemoore.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
To endeavor.
To endeavor.
To secure and maintain.
To secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilmen for the city of Monroe.
Councilmen for the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Felder. I have my flute key necklace on, just. All right, please raise your right hand to be sworn in. I, Andrew Felder.
I, Andrew Felder.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
To endeavor.
To endeavor.
To secure and maintain.
To secure and maintain.
An honest and efficient administration.
An honest and efficient administration.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Of the affairs of the city of Monroe.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
Free from partisan distinction or control.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilmen of the city of Monroe.
Councilmen of the city of Monroe.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Judge.
I'll move back to the photographer to help.
One more for good measure. You're always supposed to be smiling, man, come on.
Judge, would you join us, please? Thank you. There, tell us.
Judge, next to, okay, Brian, Andrew, back up a little bit.
We're talking this way.
Yeah, maybe turn that way.
Michelle.
Oh, where's Michelle?
The clerk. Thank you. Of course.
Going anywhere?
Michelle, I'm going to have you stand next to Andrew. Get him next to Michelle. I'll set balance. Come over here next to Paula. I'll turn toward justice for me a little bit. We go folks, three, two. More. One more time, come on, I need some big smiles. Free. Take our sales job.
Well, here's the two more, Brian. I said, here's the two more. Not doing pictures yet.
This time, we'll reconvene the first meeting of the new city council for 2022. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman.
Here.
Vining.
Here.
Germaine.
Excused.
Lemoore.
Present.
Felder.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
Present. Before we move forward with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, I just want to welcome Sister Mary Jane Erb, the president of IHM, Assistant Services and Metta Heart of Mary, for her attendance here for the invocation. And thank you for being here to give us your words, if you could, at this time, please. Please, we should stand. No, we're good.
Thank you very much, Mayor Clark, for this opportunity. It's my pleasure to be here this evening, and I'm honored also that Mary Ann Gaynor, one of our leadership council members, is also present. As you know, the IHMs have a long history in the city of Monroe, having celebrated recently our 176th anniversary of our founding. When I was elected to leadership, a colleague of mine remarked that leadership is really a call to greater service. I hope that you come to realize, as you continue to serve the people of Monroe, that this really is an act of service that you're giving to the people. I'm sure that you may be faced with some difficult decisions in the coming years. I ask that, I invite you to trust in the wisdom that you have among you. Stay in the conversations with one another and be open to what may emerge. When I was principal, advice was given to me to never make a decision without the face of a child in front of me. As you make decisions, I invite you to do so with the eye of the people of Monroe, in your mind's eye. Remember also that actions speak louder than words, and the time you spend with the members of the community will serve you well. Of course, that's in a post-COVID time. Listen to them and be open to new ideas and to new initiatives. Lastly, let me remind you to take time for yourselves and your family. It seems that never has been such an important time to do so as it is today. Nourish your spirits in whatever way will help you serve the people of Monroe. We often say that we have a huge power of prayer in the IHM motherhouse. Know that today I put a prayer intention on our prayer board for each of you as you begin your term. And know that the sisters will continue to pray for you today and in the coming years. And you can count on our prayerful support as you serve the people. So congratulations and best of luck.
Thank you for being here. As always, it's a pleasure. Thank you. This time, we're going to stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get to the consent agenda, just a couple comments, and then also have comments under the consent from council members. But I noticed that as we started and we're here for the swearing in, our state representative, TC Clemens, was here. And I know he said he advised me as he was sitting down that he'd be departing shortly after that. So I want to thank him for his presence and being here today and supporting our swearing in ceremony. I want to thank the Honorable Judge Cheryl Lohmeyer for her doing our swearing in today. It was, I know that she was traveling, got back in town, so it was great to see her, but also to provide the oath of office for all of the members. Also, I see Bill Lavoy is here today, and Bill, of course, a former state representative for the state of Michigan. So, Bill, thank you for being here and supporting us as you, as you always do. It's a pleasure to see you. So at this time, there's opportunity for the council members and have remarks just to say maybe thanks or whatever you wish to do about your, at this time, there'll be comments at the end of the meeting regarding business, if you wish to make them, but just an opportunity to make comments if you wish to do, or say thanks to anybody that may be here, or what you wish to do. And it is January, so how we do our meetings, by the month, we start with, January is the first month, so it's the first precinct, and then so twice through the year, one council member gets to start the discussion. But also, we do that on our votes as well. So when the vote comes in, it's in different order each time, which I think is, is good to have as well, so. Councilwoman Whit- Councilwoman Whitman, any comments or thank you? Sit this time.
Well, I would like to say thank you to everyone that attended and welcome to Deb. And it's a new council, a new year, and I'm looking forward to the work that we do. Now, I'm very proud of these last couple of years and the things that we have accomplished. And I'm, I'm, I have faith that we will fill more. You know, dreams, hopes, and be as successful. Be in a successful situation with the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, you know, I would like to say one other thing is that, you know, a lot of people are aware of the fact that I have not been... I'm not really sick, but I have not been well. And I am feeling much better and really looking forward to being involved this year, so.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Stillgrave, your opportunity to say thanks, and they have guests here as well, but your first comments.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'm excited. This has been just a great, great time, and I want to thank the voters. So looking forward to working with the citizens of Monroe and the city council here. And I've got to thank my family for sitting right here in the front row. And all my friends that have been so supportive of me, and so I'm really looking forward to this. Thank you. Oh, and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say welcome, Councilwoman Stillgrave, to the council. Look forward to working with you. And Happy New Year to all the citizens out there. Unfortunately, my family couldn't be with me tonight, but they're watching the YouTube link, so hi to my children tuning in. And I, unfortunately, COVID has taken a toll personally in my family. And so I've missed more meetings in the last, I'd say, two months than I ever have in the eight years since I've been here. So I wanted to go back and give my congratulations to the Chief McCormick, Chief White. And I missed firefighter Smiley's recognition, so I just want to thank them for their service. And unfortunately, I had to miss their recognition. They did a great job during their time, the time that I've known them since I've been here. So, yeah, look forward to... We got a lot done over these last two years, Labor Park and some other things, lots of infrastructure work. And we've done some of our biggest road projects in the last two years. And look forward to continuing on the council's goals and objectives. We have some big projects coming up, so I'm really excited to get to work on those. So thanks, everybody who's here this evening. Thanks to Judge Lohmeyer for taking time to swear us in this evening. And look forward to getting to work for 2022. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Lomore.
Thank you, Your Honor. First off, I'd like to thank my wonderful family for tolerating me during my time being here with council. I know that I don't always put in more time with the family because of this, but I appreciate all the effort that you allow me to put into this. So thank you very much for that. I'd also like to thank the citizens of Monroe for trusting in me again. I will do my best to ensure your trust and make 2022 and 2023 great years for the city of Monroe. I'd also like to thank Sisters of the IHM, the Honorable Judge Lohmeyer, and also welcome Councilwoman Stillgrave. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Felder.
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, the Councilwoman Whitman, I'm much, I'm very glad to hear that you're in better health. To Councilwoman Stillgrave, welcome aboard. I hope that you enjoy the work. There's certainly plenty of it. To John, it's been a pleasure serving with you, sir. Given the increase in COVID numbers, my family, my wife and I decided that it was best for her to stay home with the children this evening. As with this evening, this position is as much a burden to them as it is to me. But, you know, given the impact that we're having in our community, you know, we all see it as worth it for the, you know, for what we're building, for our children, all of us together collectively. And we think that that's a worthwhile sacrifice. The word "service" came up, and that's certainly how I see it. I enjoy the work that we're doing here. I have in the past. That doesn't mean that there haven't been tough challenges. That doesn't mean that there won't be ahead, and I hope to enjoy the work moving forward. So I look forward to the Goals and Objectives session that we will no doubt be having shortly. Thank you, Your Honor. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Councilman. So I'll start off, I want to thank the voters for their support and confidence to allow me to continue as mayor of the city of Monroe. I'm very honored to be able to be here and to serve our community. And I also want to thank the staff and employees and administration. It's been difficult a couple of years here with the council, not because of work together, but because of just the circumstances, which we, how we had to function, operate, and at home here. It's a variety of things. I don't have to tell everybody here what, no, how much challenge has been in your lives as well. But I really, the staff, the employees, administration did a wonderful job, and I think they deserve all the credit for getting things, as we set the policies, they set out the work and the action, and they did a wonderful job here in the last two years. I want to thank Clerk Treasure LaVoy. Her meetings, elections, the requests from the public, all these past two years have been more so than they probably have been in the years combined. I just think that as times change and different asks are, many of those go right to the Clerk LaVoy's office. And I enjoy that we manage the meetings together, as I say, because it's a partnership, and she's the one that keeps ensuring that we maintain the integrity of the meetings, and we do that collectively together, she and I. But also, when you talk about that, we make sure we record things and do things appropriately for the record forever. I think, you know, I have a list of accomplishments. I'm not going to go through them individually, just more of an overview. And I think they've been mentioned here on the past term, which I think are worth noting. Again, my thanks to the administration, Mr. Pastu, and all the department heads for the great leadership they've shown. But, you know, from our capital projects that were mentioned, the infrastructure, roads. I want to thank the residents for supporting the village when it came up a couple of years ago. And without that, we would not have been able to achieve what was done, and I think we've shown that, to receive, hopefully, their confidence and seeing what was achieved, because we expect to see that in the upcoming year. And then there's, of course, the financial stability, not only by making good decisions as a council as collect, but also the administration recognizing opportunities to, whether it be rebond or refund or other items we did to save hundreds of thousands of dollars for the city in the long term by refinancing things. And that's, they're keeping track of those, and Mr. Sellar, Finance Director, is a wonderful, does a wonderful job, and we're very fortunate to have him here as well. Some of the items that Councilwoman others mentioned, the parks plans, they're a priority, because we recognize what the residents are asking for, items of quality of life and how we improve those. And I think that from the, from the parks to the trails, the emphasis that was placed in the past year. So that's just a short review that I wanted to give, and I, again, a lot of thanks. I want to welcome Councilwoman Stillgrave. We've known each other for a few years, and more in passing and through her business and others. But it'll be a pleasure to work together and have your insight and input here as well, along with all the council members, because there will be some more challenges coming up. We're still not through some items that have impacted us in the past. And if we work through these and do it with the best of mine, as Sister Jane said, of what our priorities are and how we go about business, I think we'll be in good orders. So Clerk Treasure LaVoy.
There's just always so much to say on these evenings, but I'm not going to do that. First, I wanted to thank my husband and my daughters and my parents for their continued love and support, and especially my husband and my daughters, because election nights, as you alluded to, have gotten longer and longer, and they've always been very supportive of it. They know how much I really love that day, because I just, it's the heart of what I do as the elected Clerk Treasurer, so I really appreciate that. I never really get through this evening without thanking the IHMs. They helped really, you know, I had a good foundation from my parents about service and about giving back and about community. But what I experienced at the academy and then later on here in my adult years has been just a real reinforcement of that, and it's special. And it's, it's, it's just a building, but inside that building are so many incredible women and such a foundation of love and support for not just me and other academy girls, but for the entire community. So thank you very much for continuing to endure and, and, and not just, you know, work hard as you always have, but to continue to give back to the community and be part of the community. So thank you for that. Thank you, my colleagues here at City Hall, all of, all of the council members. Deb, I'm looking forward to working with you. Your Honor, it is always a pleasure working with you. We have developed a really great partnership, and I look forward to the next, next term. And, and of course, don't forget, you can bring chocolate down on Election Day next year. It'll be, '22 will be a tough election year, so my staff always appreciates that. Finally, Matt and City Manager Vince Pastu. It's, Matt, some days I can't get through some of these crazy things without you, so thank you for all of your help and your patience. And Mr. Pastu, you've really respected the position of Clerk Treasurer, and I appreciate that immensely. And I also wanted to thank Jake, real quick, Jake from our IT department, because he's the, he's probably one of the first IT people that's just ever treated... He never, he never gets impatient with me, so I just wanted to give him a shout out, and a lot of the stuff working tonight is because of Millward and because of Jake, so thank you for that. So there's just a lot going on in my office, but, you know, tonight's not about saying what I'm going to do. It's really about coming into the office again tomorrow morning and just doing what I was elected to do. And I will continue to try to do that to the best of my ability for the residents. And I'm looking forward to the next two years, so thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Because I could go on and on, but I won't.
Okay, because there's so much within two years that was achieved, and I'm glad you would mention Millward and Jake and Impact and the fact that we can have the displays that we have here this evening for not only those that are here, but those who are watching that maybe have decided to stay home and they could still see the council in action, council making decisions, and also giving our thanks to all of them for their willingness. I always say, if you, you know, I'll talk about some volunteer opportunities later, but I think it's important that the public is involved and engaged. That makes the council better. So back to our first, now back to the agenda, clerk, the next item, please.
So the first item on the agenda will be the approval of the regular agenda.
Your Honor. Councilman Lomore.
Yes, make a motion to approve the regular agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lomore, supported by Councilman Felder. Make sure there's no adjustments or changes to the agenda. See none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman.
Yes.
Yes.
Vining.
Yes.
Lomore.
Yes.
Felder. Mayor Clark.
Yes.
So there's no changes to the regular agenda, clerk, the next item is?
So the next item would normally be the consent agenda, but there are no items on the consent agenda. There are no items under presentations, communication, or public hearings. There are no items under council action. So I have no items, Your Honor.
So I don't know that this has happened before, so I'm looking, Mr. Budd's down there, I think we have to make a motion to do the consent agenda. So he gets to speak. That's the best thing about it, so.
Your Honor, I don't believe any motion is required, since there are no items on the consent agenda. There is nothing to approve.
So while that's a short meeting, we get to listen to us again, because the next item, clerk, is?
Council comments.
Council comments. And so if there's anything further that council members wish to have say, say, as we move into the new year, Councilwoman Whitman.
No further comments.
Councilwoman Stillgrave.
Just again, I want to say how excited I am to be on the council. I want to thank the citizens and my friends and family who were very supportive and really looking forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vining.
Yes, Your Honor, I was remiss in not mentioning my great colleague, John Ike Angelie. I'm going to miss you on council, John, and I'm sure we'll find further opportunities to work together. Also, to all of the department heads and the city manager, city attorney, it's been a rough two years. We didn't always see eye to eye, but we made it through focusing on what was best for the citizens. So again, I'm excited to get back to work here. That's all I have. And thank you, sisters, for the beautiful prayer. And yeah, that's it, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Lomore.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just looking forward to our Goals and Objectives session. I know we have a lot of great ideas as a council. Now is the time to put them together, come up with these great ideas, and, and put them to use for the city of Monroe. I know that this council can do it, and I'm looking forward to that, this, these next two years. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Felder.
No further comments this evening, Your Honor.
Sure. I just have a couple. I, of course, I, as you go through, thank people, you really should remember your family, and I want to thank my wife for her time she's put up with me over the past, not just this past term, but terms in the past. And I say that in a sense, because we, we both get involved with it in our community in different ways, and we support each other in how we do that, and so I am very appreciative for that. Councilman Ike Angelie, I know I gave my comments at the last meeting for his, his service to the community, not only on council, but in many fashions. I actually had a conversation with him earlier today about just a couple of follow-up items. I knew he would not be able to attend this evening in the final meeting, but I just want to share that he sends his regards, and he says, wishes well for the council. So Councilwoman Stillgrave, again, welcome. I think it's, we're going to move right forward, and that's kind of my next comment, which is, you know, in January, we always talk about goals and objectives. You can tell that everybody knows it's coming, because we've done that. That's where you get started. We have things from our current goals and objectives, and I'm not going to go through the long list of items that have been achieved in the past two years. But as there always are, there's some that we start and maybe we just haven't quite finished yet, so I expect some of those will carry forward. I had a couple of residents ask me about a couple, and I said they can expect to see that as a continuation, at least as I look and we present. And then there's always the new items that we need to take on. I know that Mr. Pastu is going to have his some comments here this evening, and this was about goals and objectives also, and really about some timelines and strategy moving forward. So the next item I want to just simply talk about is appointments. And appointments, I have, that I make recommendations for appointments and reappointments to the council, and the council then reviews and approves those, and they'll be coming at the next meeting. Our next meeting, so everybody has this, is going to be on Tuesday again also, because it'll be on Tuesday, January 18th. Monday is a holiday. It's Martin Luther King Day. So I'll make a comment there that, because we won't meet again before then, but think about what that, what that means to everybody. It means the service, not only to ourselves, our families, and the community, and take the opportunity to reflect on what Martin Luther King Day is about, and also the fact that there's items in which we can move forward in our community as well, if we keep him and his legacy and his thoughts in mind as well. So speaking of the appointments, council members, you'll receive an email from me tomorrow, because I, as I've done in the past, I send the list of appointments that council currently serve on. And of course, there's those that will become, have become vacant on council seats with the change. But also, maybe there's an item that you just want to try a different appointment on a board, commission, liaison, or representative. So I'll just take time to think about that. I was going to look at the calendar. I didn't do that before I came. But obviously, looking at the Tuesday agenda, we know that the agenda's got to be in by Wednesday. So if you get those back probably by next week, Monday, that would give me time to put things in place and get with Ms. Weaver as we get that agenda item prepared. And also residents that are either here or listening, I have a few applications that are on file. I'll be making calls through the week to those regarding potential appointments and also reappointments. So again, council, I'll send that through your council email tomorrow, so you can look at that. Feel free to give me a call if you wish to have any conversation on the boards and commissions that you may be interested in, that you know some vacancies, because we all have an obligation to serve on at least one of the boards and commissions, or somebody else has to do all of them. That's not how it works. or somebody else has to do all of them, that's not how it works, so I appreciate your looking at that and getting back with me. That's my comments for this evening. Clerk Treasurer LaVoye?
I just have a couple of more things. We are a little short-staffed in the Clerk Treasurer's office at, at the moment, and one of our staff members is out this week and next, so it's Jamie and myself. So if you, if, if you, as someone in the audience, or if you hear of some people calling in and maybe we don't answer right away, which is very unlike our office, know that we are returning calls as quickly as we can. I just kind of wanted to, you know, no service will be diminished, but if we don't answer the phone right away, we are there and we are, are working, we're accepting mail, we're checking the Dropbox, everything is going on as usual, we just may be a little slower on the phone. So I just wanted to, to say that and also thank my staff because they're, Jamie and Megan are doing a great job right now. Other than that, property taxes are still due up until the 14th of February, and that's important to remember, and other than that, we'll be beginning to have information about the upcoming redistricting and how that impacts the voters in Monroe. They will be receiving new voter registration cards outlining the new districts once the districts are set, and that, of course, will be pending any lawsuits that are to be filed on, based on the redistricting decision, so I'll keep you posted on all of that, and that's all I have.
Thank you, clerk. Mr. Pastu, comments this evening?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I know we have talked a lot about the setting the, the city council goals for the next couple of years, and Pat Weaver in our office will be reaching out to try and set up a Saturday morning like we typically do. You can anticipate, I'll put together a correspondence where we finished with the 2021 goals and some things that we need to finish up as the, the mayor alluded to. Also, I, I do appreciate the comments from the council in two, in, in, in a couple of regards. One is, there has been a lot accomplished, but it certainly came with the support and appreciation of the city council, and I know the department heads appreciate that a great deal. You've been very helpful, supportive of a lot of the endeavors and understanding when we've run into some, some delays and some, some challenges, and so I do want to mention also the city attorney, Mr. Budd's, I, having worked in this for, be 30 years as of January 20th as a city manager, he is very, very productive and very helpful, and, and we wouldn't be where we're at without someone with his commitment, and, and part of it is also with, you know, Clerk Treasurer LaVoye, you know, having worked with a number of city clerks, our citizens should be happy and proud that you have a very professional operation, very ethical in their endeavors, and so I couldn't be happier with the team that I've got, whether it's, you know, Mr. Budd's, Clerk LaVoye, and department heads, and then finally, the council's support. We've got a lot done as a result of everybody working together and appreciating the roles that everybody plays, and so we look forward to staff level to work on the goals and objectives, a lot to do, a lot to finish up, and then lastly, we'd like to congratulate Councilman, Councilmember Stillgrave for being here and looking forward to working with you as we go forward. So with that, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Vince. So next is citizens' comments. Are there any comments from those present here this evening? Yes, sir. And as we always say, mindful of the roles of the chamber, you have three minutes to make your comments, please state your name and jurisdiction of residence.
Good evening, Your Honor, and respected council members. Richard Mika, resident city of Monroe. I want to congratulate you on your post as city council members, and I want to encourage you to continue to protect and defend our valiant, hard-won heritage, and with that, a Happy New Year and congratulations again on your post. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mika. Other comments from those present here this evening? Any further comments? Before we adjourn, I, Pat Weaver, who's, does everything for us and, and very thankful for her service, not only to the manager's office and the, and the mayor's office and the entire city employees, she is here this evening, and, you know, as we had a reception planned for before today, and we did not, we postponed that for reasons of kind of milling and congregating together, but we did still get the cake. So when you depart here this evening, you may, as you go out the chambers and to the left, there'll be little containers with pieces of cake, because the cake did arrive, so I hope that you all take some with you and enjoy, and maybe say thanks to Pat as well for all the hard work she does, not only this evening, but throughout the entire year, I don't know where to be without Pat and how she manages these things for the office, all the offices and the administration, so. With that, motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Lamore, supported by Councilman Felder to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilperson Whitman?
Yes.
Stillgrave?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clerk?
Yes.
And thank you again all for being here, and...